This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I may just do that for the remainder of the night. I'm trying to get, trying to get them started. So. Jesse, so, so if anybody has an issue with that extreme order, we'll be sure. And we can get all this. Usually, I just wanted to get it. He's been over there, so, and I think if I get away, I think I can start. They'll, they'll go, I've got a truck that I'll have material at, in truck. So that would placate most of sound like something that I think. They didn't, they didn't, they didn't picture them. They, they were on, you know, way up on one end and way down on the other. They didn't do anything across that whole thing. There's a driveway and then somebody got in that spare.
All right, we'll call this meeting the Sedalia City Council order. We'll begin with prayer and pledge allegiance. Chaplain Mattson, you have the floor.
Please stand as able and join me in our invocation. Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Sedalia City Council, mayor, administrators, staff and members meet to hear about and discuss important matters that affect our community for the betterment of all of our citizens, not only here in the city but in our surrounding community. We're so grateful for their dedication and service to our citizens. We ask your protection for all of our first responders, police, fire, sheriff, ambulance, EMTs, hospital staffs, all who are 24/7 serving protecting us off at their own peril. Tonight, welcoming, welcoming a badge pinning for Farley Burke Fire Department. It has passed six months of training. And also tonight, especially the swearing in of our newly elected city officials. A special blessing for them. We are grateful for the United States of America, our constitutional republic, for which so many have fought and died to create and preserve for these 246 years. We ask your blessing and protection for all who serve today, military civilians, here and throughout the world, keeping our country safe from threats from without and more sadly, threats from within. And now, as we leave this evening, please protect us and our loved ones. Keep us from harm until we meet again. And all this is prayed in the name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
My congregation is suited by the United States of America and is true to the God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, eternally just as God.
Roll call, please. Robinson.
Yes.
Oldham here.
Marshall.
Here.
Boggs.
Here.
Hiller.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Foster.
Here.
Lit.
Here.
All right, first item on our agenda is a badge pinning. We're going to invite up Chief Irwin to go ahead and handle that. Chief Irwin, you have the floor.
Thank you. Members of the council, mayor, this evening, it gives me great pleasure to come and do these things in front of you. First of all, I'd like to say that. Tonight, we are pinning Farley Burke. She has completed her probationary period with the Sedalia Fire Department. She has earned the right to wear the badge of the city of Sedalia Fire Department. In her short time with the Sedalia Fire Department in this process, she has exceeded all expectations in every aspect of her job. I'm very proud of her and I'm very proud to be standing for you tonight, watching her pin her badge. So if Ms. Burke and Ms. Moulton will come through, she's being pinned by driver operator Matt Moulton. Her family is in the crowd tonight. One note, Ms. Burke is a 1999 graduate of the Sedalia Fire Department Fire 1 and 2 program. 29, sorry. My dad went back to my high school days, that's what I said.
So, Ms. Burke? Congratulations. All right, moving along to our next item. We have the acceptance of the Citizens Traffic Advisory Commission minutes dated March 15th, 2023. Do I have a motion in the second?
Let's approve, Boggs.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we need the council meeting.
Oh, yep, you are correct. I blazed over that. So we have the approval of the previous session's minutes for the council meeting dated April 3rd, 2023. Do I have a motion in the second?
Motion approved. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Now, we have the roll call of standing committees versus financial administration. Chairman Marshall, you have the floor.
I've got three items on my report tonight. Up first is the organizers of the Ukrainian festival will give a presentation of their plans for the festival this year.
Hi, once again, it's been a year.
It's really been a year.
And it's a privilege to be here with you guys. Last year, as you guys intended, were able to see what we could do with our community and what we can bring to Sedalia. At the same time, maybe not everybody knows what Sedalia helped us bring back to our community where we grew up and we were, from where we came from. Now, we gathered at the festival in those six hours that we had, we gathered 26 and a half thousand to help the people there. And we're thinking about giving you guys a report where the money went. And the problem with having like specific pictures of compiled food sections and everything is that there is no storage unit. Everything that you guys will see in the video, that's what was brought from Poland. It was paid for by our church and by the support of the community that we received. Everything that was carried through Sprinter vans, other vans and everything else into, they brought them to the hotspots in Ukraine. So at first, we were thinking of possibly taking one region and just supporting one region. It's a lot easier to keep track of progress. It's a lot easier to show videos of the same people. And then we got to a point where our pastor said that it's hard to deny people help when they're sending you pictures, what happened for them. So we started with Kiev, then went to Kherson area, then went to Bucha. And basically everywhere that it was happening, whatever the situation called for, that's where all the money went for it. Aside from those 26 and a half thousand, our church donated an extra 60,000 on top of it. And we're trying to work with the refugees that are coming from Ukraine. They're staying there and our church is reaching out to help them, whether it's finding them housing, paying their rent, paying for food until they get some kind of government aid. And all of that is kind of included in some parts that the festival money was taking part of. 5,000 of previous years' gannings that we received, they went to those people. They came, they had nothing to provide them with clothing, their kids with whatever they needed, doctor's appointments, take them, whatever they had to do. And this year, we have the privilege again to do another one. If, with your guys' permission, we wanted to do another festival to basically do the same thing. We're trying to create a map where the funds went. So by the festival time, we're going to have a map set up where and which regions we were able to help, whether it's being food and clothing or flashlights and generators, whatever the situation called for, so that you guys may see where everything kind of went. We have a couple of videos for you. One's a review of the previous year's festival, if you guys can play it.
You want the previous festival, Pur?
Yeah, previous festival. Well, that's last year's revision. That was the first time we did anything like this. We had a lot, a lot to learn from and a lot to improve on, including some of the things that are trash removal and bathroom situation and stuff like that. That's already taken care of for this year. We're hoping that if you guys have other suggestions to let us know, we have almost two weeks, that we can change something, that we can expand or maybe take something away that you guys didn't find something that you want us to change. It's still available, we're still planning and we're just getting ready to finalize everything. And the other section, the, the other video, if you guys can play it. There's a, it starts with one lady speaking and she's thanking everybody that provided funds and sent them their way so they were able to buy the food that they brought to these places that just got hit. And as she's speaking in the background at the very end, when she's going to be zooming out, you could hear an explosion, like the attack is still continuing. She was saying that nobody except for them has seen to that place yet at that time. And she's Sprinters, I see a picture of one of them a little bit later in the video, it's all set up and everything, because they got ambushed as they were delivering, but everybody they survived. The scar from Poland, the little mortuary. Flashlight. People that couldn't evacuate, had nowhere to go. This group also brings them, they do not evacuate. They try to somehow bring up their shelter so it's better than whatever they have. Is the Sprinter, they just attacked it? Second one. And that's what happened. There's a video of it actually happening in the time, one of the guys was filming it. The picture was not really really at the forefront. Basically, the remainder of the video, it goes in, it kind of zooms into a church group, youth group that's helping out and kids, everybody has a job to do. And they're just zooming out and they're saying, thank you for everybody that did something. And so we wanted to thank you from our church as well for allowing us to do this again, for helping us, providing us the time and any opportunities that we had. To thank Steve and everybody who works with him, Jolene, everybody who was making this possible. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions for me?
No questions, council. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. God bless again. Up next, I have the city's insurance broker will provide a presentation outlining the pros and cons of moving to self-funding employee health benefits.
Hello, my name is Terri Etter and I am from IMA. We are out of Kansas City area. We got the opportunity to partner with City of Sedalia back in October, I believe, of last year. And moving forward, you know, what we are striving to do is try to bring the most innovative and cost-effective way to your guys' employee benefit plans to help save the city money and look at a strategic plan as we go out throughout the years to make sure that you guys are saving enough money and offering the best benefits for your employees of the City of Sedalia. So we're going to go through a very quick presentation. I'm going to try to keep it short. It's a lot of information and just to let you guys know that this is really more informative. And we don't need any decisions today or anything like that. We really just wanted to come and present to you guys and let you know what we have been talking with Kelvin and with Shannon about on the administration side of, you know, gearing your employee benefits toward at the end of this year for open enrollment. So what we are recommending is moving into the phase one of a three-year roadmap plan to establish a true self-funding medical plan for the city. By moving to a true self-funding plan, this would allow the city more discretion on plan design, tracking and claims and funding by keeping the additional funding in reserves to pay weekly claims and monthly admin fees. This allows the city to have more control of the funding toward claims. And at the end of the year, the city could see the things left in a reserve versus the money staying directly with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City. This would allow the city with the possibility adding the option, which is strictly optional, to include your guys' local hospital as a narrow network for medical services to add more cost savings to your participants. So currently, you guys are on a fully insured medical plan with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So basically, what that means is fully insured, the city is paying 100% of all premiums to Blue Cross and Blue Shield, the insurance company. And then the insurance company is responsible for the administration and claims incurred under the current contract of the plan. While the insurance company is on the hook for all the claims and administrative costs, the carrier keeps all the premiums, dollars not spent at the end of the year. And so they keep that as a profit. The reason we were recommending this to the city is because looking through analytics and we're tracking your guys' claims, you guys are sitting at a very low cost ratio, loss ratio, which basically means there's just money sitting out there that you guys are paying toward premiums, but your claims are not equalling what you are paying in premiums. So all that additional cost is just staying with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City and not going back into your regular funding with the city. So as this roadmap plan, as we are starting to lay this out, we are proposing in year one that we look at a partially self-funded plan, which the city pays the fixed cost, admin fees, which include the premiums for catastrophic claims, which is called stop loss. On top of the fixed costs, the city would be responsible for claims liability, which is, which is the actual claim payments toward, to the providers. The insurance premiums protect the plan by capping the plan's financial liability for medical costs. Any funds that were not spent in fixed costs or claims payment stays in the city's bank account. Looking at partially self-funded option, Blue KC would still be paying the administration and administering the claims. The claims incurred would be pulled from the city's reserve account and Blue KC would pay the provider directly. This would be, of course, after negotiated network discounts directly through Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City. I'll stop there. If anybody has any questions, I know that's a lot of information, but if anybody has any questions.
What would be the amount of the stop loss that you guys are proposing?
So first year, especially if we're starting on this roadmap plan, we're going to definitely propose a smaller stop loss. So maybe about 85 to 100,000 stop loss. Of course, as we go out through the years in that three-year roadmap, we're going to look to increase the stop loss. Because as you go through this presentation, you will see your first year, you're not going to see as many claims because you're going to be basically pulling everything from 2022, or incurred in 2023, I'm sorry, I forgot what year I'm in. 2023, in 2024, it's going to actually go back to the fully insured plan and those claims are going to be paid for out of that claim fund. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So at the end of that three years, where would you see the stop loss at?
I mean, typically, we usually see it about, usually around 150. We usually bump it up to.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but some of that is going to depend on, as we get claims that we can look more, more into that claim status and we can actually tailor that to what we're seeing. And of course, you know, the whole, the more risk we take on, the more potential return. And by the worst, you know, the less risk, the less opportunity for failure. So it's, it's going to be a decision that we are absolutely going to be comfortable involved in as far as how much risk you're, you're comfortable with and, and there might be potential return. So this is something that we absolutely will bring in the experts to IMA and have all this actuarial stuff that they can do and look at that and look at it just like an insurance carrier would. And then provide recommendations back there.
Right, yeah. So this is just informative purposes. We just really want to bring you guys in the loop and kind of let you know the direction that we're going for the end of the year for this year's renewal. Because you guys are literally, you're keeping so much money with Blue Cross and Blue Shield because your guys' claims have been so low. Blue Cross and Blue Shield is, you don't want to say this, but they are literally profiting off your medical plan that you're paying for your employees because you guys are paying that set premium amount directly to Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So typically, on this type of plan, we, like I said, we recommend a three-year roadmap. This first year, we're basically calling it like dip your toes in it, stick your toes in it, just kind of see how it goes. The partially self-funded plan would stay with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City. So there would be no change of network. There would, there would be no transition period. Really, everything would just go directly to Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City. It would be a stop loss with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. They would be still administering your claims. Everything would stay the exact same. The only difference is, is we're looking at a self-funded product. You would have as the city, and as we gather more analytical data on our side, we can predetermine what kind of plans would adjust best for your employee population. Looking at your plans across the way, like you have three different plan offerings, there may not be any utilization on one plan. So we may blend out into another plan. So you have that discretion of really making that determination of what type of plans you want to offer to your employees. Okay. So this is just a quick timeline. I'm not going to go word for word with this one. This is just the timeline for year one. So if you look year one, you can expect claims to be significantly low due to the lag claims. Like I said before, your claims that were incurred during 2023, it's usually going to be set to where you're going to be paying everything. So everything that was incurred in 2023, in 2024, when you're on this partially self-funded plan, those claims are still going to be paid for under your fully insured plan. So you're not going to, you're going to definitely see a huge lag there in your claims. So like typically, we see about a three-month lag period that any claims that are incurred in 2023 that will be paid directly through the fully insured plan. Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City will pay the run at claims due to the claims lag. The next slide is the stop loss contract review. And this is basically what you were asking about is the stop loss. So what we project is usually in the first year, we usually say, hey, let's look at about 85, just to stay close, because like I said, you're going to have a lot of those lag claims that are still going on to your fully insured plan. So we usually don't project to put such a high stop loss. As we start gathering data throughout the three years, of course, we're going to keep on raising that up and the more risk the city is willing to take on. So it's more of like a, the way I consider stop loss is kind of an umbrella policy over your insurance. So to make sure, to ensure the city doesn't have to pay so much money for a catastrophic claim that comes through. On the next page, this is the self-funding review. And this is currently based off of our data that we are able to pull. Everything on a fully insured market right now is, you guys are on a two-month lag. So I am not able to see actual, actual data to date. But, so this data was pulled for, back in February, and this is the closest I can get currently. So in 2022 alone, what we're showing is that you guys paid in total 1.696, 687 billion dollars toward premium costs. What we're estimating for 2023, based off of our analytical data, we're projecting that you guys are going to be paying 1.671, 708 million. And then in 2024, what we're projecting for the fully insured renewal is it's going to go up probably around 1.7 million. Because you have to, you have to think about, on a fully insured platform, there's going to be those added costs that the insurance is going to make sure to bump up. We usually see about a blend, about an eight and a half percent increase, no matter what, no matter where your claims are sitting at on a fully insured product. So what we are projecting is that we are recommending to fund the reserve account. So we want to bump that reserve up there so that we have plenty of money in there to pull all those claims out of. Also gives you that protection if you have that huge catastrophic claim before the stop loss comes in. So if we set your stop loss to 85,000 that first year and we have in reserve that 1.84 million, then you guys would only be pulling out that 85 to hit that stop loss because stop loss takes care of everything over that 85,000. So for 2024, what we are projecting is for the immature projected cost, it's actually, we're seeing based off your claims data and everything, we're projecting that it's, you're going to probably be running about 1.68 million. So if you look at that cost difference of how much is actually going to be sitting in your reserve at the end of even the first year, we're projecting you guys can have about $160,000 just sitting in reserve. And if you think about it, all that money is actually, right now, is just sitting with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City. And instead of coming back to the city so you guys can do improvements to things and do whatever you need to do with that money in your reserves. Do you have any questions on that?
Would you, and it's probably something you and I were sure, would that additional risk affect our S and P rate?
I would not think so. I mean, that's something that we can certainly ask them, but as long as we sufficiently fund it, you know, in the reserve, I would not think that we would. We certainly should ask that question.
Anybody else have any questions right along?
I could, I would add to this, you know, and Terri said it at the beginning, but an important piece for me is not just the savings, but to give the opportunity to be way more flexible in your plan time. When you go to a fully insured plan, you get to pick one of the plans that they've offered. And if they offer this, but not this, you're, you're, you're put, you're, you're going to fit into one of their picks. With a self-funded, particularly when you get to a fully self-funded plan, we can make all of those choices. And we can look at it in terms of. And we can look at it in terms of, with their assistance, with their, once they start giving them more annual claims data, they can look at it through their actuarial studies and they can actually look at it, okay, if we did this, this is what it's going to do. And this is, you know, and so we can do what with this, the least. The other thing is, is in my mind, again, when we, when we do things that you all have approved for the health and wellness, those kinds of things, when we're, if we can do things that will encourage and actually cause our employees to get more healthy and safe up here, we actually recognize that and then we can follow that. So those, yeah, the cost increases is important, but I think the other piece is just as important to, to looking at that. And, you know, let's face it, the reason why, the reason why the city provides us with the benefits is to make it a valuable benefit to attract and retain employees. And so it gives us way more flexibility, even if it was cost neutral, it would give us way more flexibility to do a better benefit for employees. Did I just say anything?
Nope, you're absolutely correct.
So I have a question, if I may. The coverage to the individual employee, the services that they're already getting, the providers that they're already going to, they would still be able to get those services and still be able to go to those providers that they're doing now.
Correct.
There'd be no change there.
No, there would be no change there. So basically, all you're doing is you're taking, the city is the value, is taking the funding into their hands. They're not messing with the employee benefits or anything. What they're doing is they're saying, as the city, you guys are going to take on that risk because you guys want to be able to have that discretion of, you know, there may be something on a fully insured plan that you want to be able to cover. Well, the city would have that discretion to be able to add, you know, of course, not being discriminatory or anything like that, but want to add any additional benefits to your plan offerings that on a regular fully insured plan, you would not be able to offer. There would be no disruption, especially in year one. And as we move forward, then we'll definitely continue on discussing, like going an unbundled option, which we don't want to even unpack that right now. So that just gets a little bit too deep. So we're just kind of dipping our toes in it right now.
When you think this is going to be presented to council?
She's got that. If you wait a slide or two, we'll.
So the next, the next slide is actually our timeline. So we will meet with the administrative team, Kelvin and Shannon, in June, and we'll go through the self-funding review meeting. Basically, we're going to give you, give them the projections, what we're thinking that, you know, if you were to stay completely on the plans and not change any plan designs, where we would recommend that you fund your benefit plans too. And then we get to mess around and kind of mess with how much we want to contribute toward the employee benefit plan and how much we want the employees to have to contribute. So there's a lot of moving pieces as we are moving forward into this, into this fully or partially self-funded. So we will be meeting constantly, obviously, as you can see through our timeline, in September, we're going to go through the initial estimated underwriting, self-funded versus fully insured. We are going to make sure that you guys are a hundred percent fully aware of what you are looking at, you know, doing the self-funding versus the self, fully insured renewal option. We're going to review the plan design options, then we'll start talking about O E, communication and planning. Obviously, if we're staying with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, there's going to be no network changes, no, the only difference, the employees are going to expect is probably getting a new I D card. Because when you go on to self-funding, you will get a new group number, but the card will look the exact same. And then October of 2023, what we are proposing is we would like the final client, final decision, and I would like to be able to come and talk to you guys on October 2nd, that first week of October, to get your final approval to move forward. And then we will just start from there. And we'll start just the regular renewal season like we, you guys do every year.
That would be your first council meeting in October. That's one of the points, the contracts, the stop loss, the administrative contracts, all of those kinds of things. You can, you'll have a go, no-go decision at that point.
Who underwrites the stop loss?
It would be Blue Cross and Blue Shield. For this year, it would be Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City. Everything will stay with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City. Until like, we decide maybe three years down the road that you guys are ready to unbundle it all, and then we can start looking at other stop loss carriers.
And that would be based on that.
Right. All based on.
Would you recommend that?
Yep. Yep. Do you guys have any questions on the timeline? So this is just a sample timeline of what we usually look at when we're doing a three-year self-funding strategic plan. And so for 2024, we're, this is going to be your immature plan year. Like I said, you know, all your claims, your runout claims and everything are going to be administered by your fully insured plan with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. We would go ahead and put in an A S O, which stands for Administrative Services Only. With enforced carriers, Blue Cross and Blue Shield, the stop loss, the admin fees and the prescription R X would stay with Blue Cross and Blue Shield of Kansas City. So we, on budgeting aspects, we would fund the immature max total cost, excess funding held in reserve. We're going to budget for worst-case scenario. We're not going to underbudget because we want to make sure that you guys are fully protected and you have plenty of money in there to pay any catastrophic claim that may be up to that eighty-five thousand stop loss level. Monthly cash flow considerations, no terminal or year two, year two stop loss protection if we move back to fully insured. The one thing to note, though, on this three-year self-funding strategic plan, we highly do not recommend, if we're going to do this, we want, we want a commitment for you guys to stay on this and we go down this roadmap for this full three years. It's really hard to stay on a, go over to a partially self-funded plan and say after year one, ah, I don't think it's going to work. We're going to go back to fully insured. Completely your decision, but in order for self-funding to work and you guys to start seeing the more control you have over your health insurance plans, we recommend staying in the program for at least three years. As we move up and go, look at unbundled options, all different options, because it opens a whole new area of insuring your own benefits and taking care of your own benefits for Do you guys have any questions on that?
I do. Some examples of who you've done this with, Missouri.
On the Missouri side, I don't. Do you have any?
Cities?
Cities?
Um, trying to think some in Missouri. We've done this quite a bit on the private side, on the public side. We do work with a lot of cities across Kansas, particularly the city of Pittsburgh. We've done that with.
Pittsburgh.
Kansas.
Okay.
Larger side, Sedgwick County is a city, obviously, we do self-funding with them as well.
Which county?
Sedgwick.
In Kansas.
Sedgwick County, so that's Wichita.
Sedgwick, okay.
Yes.
It's me, it's Myers.
Yes.
I'm not going to be on the plan.
So within I M A, we do quite a bit of cities across the country, cities and municipalities and things like that. Those are a couple of examples here relatively. We do also do a lot of school districts as well.
We do school districts, we do self-funding for school districts also. So we try to stay in the public entity space with the self-funding. So we work with other public entities besides cities with the self-funding.
School districts that would be a comparable 1.6 million dollar type of.
Yes. I actually, yes. We have a school district in, several school districts in Kansas that we are doing self-funding, company self-funded for.
And they are.
There's also Waterme School District. Um, Wichita.
Wichita.
Wichita Public Schools.
We can certainly.
Okay, that's good. That's not, yeah, that's fine.
Better than trying to do it off.
No, I know, I get it. I know, I just kind of, well, I have an idea.
No, yeah, and that makes perfect sense.
Important decision, I would.
Right.
Trust but verify, right?
And we were going through the broker selection, this was a lot of what true at two I M A was, their experience and their capability in doing not only the management of the self-funding, but doing the transition. And I don't remember which ones that they, that caught my eye when we were looking through the public schools. They had to start real long.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. So the next one is, slide is just the self-funding considerations. So self-funding is discretion for plan design. Fully insured, you get basically what you get from the insurance carrier. That's the plan that you're going to be on and what your employees are going to be on. The self-funded, technically, you can make exceptions on your plan and make, you know, make some exceptions that you decide that you want to add on to your plan. Expenses plan, I can't read that, I'm sorry. Exposed plans or future risk of similar claims and complications or discrimination. So there's just a little bit of risk of, you know, discrimination and stuff like that because you have to, as you're administering your own plan, you have to make that decision of what you want to add and keep on to your plan. So we, at I M A, we definitely walk through that full process to make sure that you guys, there's no discriminatory things that you are doing on your plan. And we have a whole compliance team that will walk you guys through that. So there is final benefit determination. It does open up the potential for employee issues and, like I said before, possible discrimination. But we do have a full compliance team that will help you build your plan. So you're not going to go into this blindly. Self-funding on the cash flow, monthly variance in claims expenses, administrative service only A S O, nearly reimbursement of large claims, it is very quickly. You fund the account versus accounting function, so you are constantly feeding into that account every single month. So the premiums that you are already collecting from your city workers and city employees would go into that escrow account as you are funding the account. Every month, you would be receiving still a monthly invoice for your administrative fees, but then weekly, you would get a weekly register amount of the claims that are coming through. So if somebody goes to the doctor, you guys were going to see that on your claim, or they would see that on their claims, and it would come out of the account. And that reserve account would pay for those claims. But just to note on that, Blue Cross and Blue Shield will still pay, be paying your claims. The money is just going to be funded by your reserve account. There is some plan risk, there is some gaps in contracts, ensuring coverage aligns with regulatory requirements, ERISA, mental health parity, et cetera, which I said, we have a full compliance team that will walk you guys through all of this. You do own your runout if moved to fully insured. So that's the reason why we recommend you stay on it for the full three years. Because once you guys switch from a self-funded plan over to a fully insured plan, you, as the city, would be responsible for any runout claims that were incurred previously. Again, I'm going to reiterate this again, it is a long-term commitment that we ask for to develop and required to at least have three years in the self-funded market. So these are just like, the last page is basically just information, definitions that you guys can read through. I'm not going to read through it for you, but any type of information on the, as we move forward into looking at self-funded, those are basically the terms that you can read through. Do you guys have any questions? I tried to keep it as short as possible. All right. Well, thank you. Guys, have a good evening.
Kelvin, would you mind sending that?
Next, our financial director, Jessica Pile, will provide a brief update on primary tax collection trends.
Been a while, but I'm back. Okay, so the first chart you see is looking at January sales, so payments that we received in March. The net sales and used fiscal year-to-date was up over 1.1 million dollars or 6.8%. That's for the 12 months reported. That's a budget variance of 470,835 dollars to the plus. Franchise tax for the 12 months is higher than the prior 12 months by 176,518 dollars, primarily due to gas tax, which I think we see repeatedly every month. Transportation tax for a full 12 months was higher than the prior 12 months, primarily due to gasoline tax, which was up 19% over that 12-month period. And vehicle sales were up 1.9% fiscal year-to-date. Property tax payments, the majority of those were received in December and January, and those are up for this 12-month period, 4.5% over the previous 12 months. And then looking at February sales, for sales and use tax that were received this month in April, already we're up 155,907 dollars over the same month last year, or 11.6% and up from our budget of 102,120 dollars.
That's all I have. All right. Thank you, Chairman Marshall. Up next, we have a public work.
Chairman Holden, you have four. Thank you very much, Chairman. We have four items tonight. The first item that we have is in order to retain a certain employee, FAS is recommending implementing a P T O system with paid time off to grant part-time employees time off while reducing financial burden to the employee. This is specifically for the parks department. So we have an ordinance adopting the paid time off policy for part-time parks employees.
Do you have any council discussion regarding the ordinance? Having heard that, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-16, An Ordinance Adopting a Paid Time Off Policy for Part-Time Parks Employees.
Second reading?
Second.
All of the favor.
Aye.
All of the pros?
Thank you. Bill number 2023-16, An Ordinance Adopting a Paid Time Off Policy for Part-Time Parks Employees.
I have a passage.
Second.
Full call please. Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Frost?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
All of them.
Second item I have tonight is approving a continuing agreement with capital materials for the purchase of asphalt. This is a yearly thing that we approach. We have an agreement for $80 per ton for recycling material and $92 per ton for recycling material with the fiber.
Any council discussion regarding the ordinance or the, I'm sorry, the quote? Having heard that, I need a motion in a second to accept this quote.
Requested approval.
Second. Thank you. All of the favor.
Aye.
All of the pros?
Third item I have tonight is an ordinance for a purchase agreement with our local caterpillar dealer for a steel wheel roller and a skid steer hammer attachment for a street department.
Any council discussion regarding the purchase? Having heard that, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-61, An Ordinance Authorizing Sales Agreements for the Purchasing of Equipment for the Street Department.
Second reading?
Second.
All of the favor.
Aye.
All of the pros?
Thank you. Bill number 2023-61, An Ordinance Authorizing Sales Agreements for the Purchasing of Equipment for the Street Department. for the street department.
Final passage.
Second. Full call please. August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
All of them.
The final item I have tonight is another purchase agreement with our local caterpillar dealers, this is for a mini excavator for the water department.
Any council discussion regarding the purchase of the mini excavator? Having heard that, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-62, an ordinance authorizing sales agreements for the purchasing of equipment for the water department.
Second reading?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Bill number 2023-62, an ordinance authorizing sales agreement for the purchasing of equipment for the water department.
Final passage.
Second. Full call please. Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
All of them. Thank you Chairman Oldham, up next we have Public Safety, Chairman Robinson, you have four. Our first item is the training agreement for new fire department employees. I'll ask the chief to come up and explain this, this is an effort to retain employees, training employees.
Greetings again, members of the council. So what the Sodalia Fire Department and HR and what we're looking to do is something like we, where you guys are already doing with the Sodalia Police Department. What we have found is, is that with our hiring process, we're getting a number of applicants that are coming to us wanting jobs, that don't have the necessary certifications for the job that we require, which is our Fire One and Two and our EMTB program. What we have found is, is we have candidates that would like to come to work for us, but can't either, A, afford for the class, or want us to pay for that class just, just because. So what we have decided with the city administration and HR is, is that if we have an applicant come to us, and we put them through a Fire One and Two program, or we put them through an EMT, or pay for that EMT program, that that employee has to sign an agreement to work for the City of Sodalia for 24 months, or they have to reimburse the city for those costs. And then, and that's what this, this agreement is.
Do you think, Matt, do you think two years is enough, I mean, cost-wise?
We, we looked at that, but you can get through a Fire One and Two program for about $2,200, and an EMT program for about 18, so we're not talking large amounts of money. If we had to put somebody through both classes, it would be about a $4,000 expense to the city, so you figure that over, over 24 months, I'd rather keep them for 24 months than let them go and, and have them reimburse it, I'd rather keep them with us.
Yeah, and we looked at it in comparison for what we're doing on the police department, and actually, we do three years on the police department, but it's quite a bit more money.
It is significantly more money.
That's, that's what we wanted to do. On the police department, if they come to us with, you know, already post-certified and all of that, we do a $3,000 sign-on bonus, and that, so, you know, in comparison here, we're doing a, a one-year sign-on bonus for a police department at $3,000. And to, or, this is about $4,000 for two years, so. You know, in answer to your question, I don't know if it's the right number or not, but it's, it's.
Well, I mean, it makes sense, I just, you know, I, I just wanna make sure, should we keep them three years, or, or just lock them in at two years?
I can keep them for 20.
I agree. I think that you're, I think you're asking a lot from a candidate to, to commit three years.
That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
What kind of screening process do we have in place for each of these candidates before we make a commitment like that to them?
So, we would, we would do our normal hiring process, we would do interviews, we do our physical abilities test, we would do our, our written testing, it would be everything like we were hiring somebody in, with all of the certifications. It would just be that they don't have that, that certification. So, we would do all of the same testing and background checks and all of that. If by chance somebody were to fail out, or not be able to complete the program, then they would incur the cost of, of the program, or at least where we are in the program.
Yeah, even if we decide to term them, if they don't, you know, regardless of whether they quit or we term them, if they don't make it to full 24 months, then probationary is gonna have to pay for that. When would their probationary period begin?
Their probationary period would begin from date of employment until they've reached all of their certifications.
Okay. But then the 24 months does not start until after they've got the certification.
Till they're all the job.
Yep, so if, if we hire somebody today, and it takes them six months to get through their Fire One and Two and EMT, once they get those, that's when that 24-month commitment would, would take over.
And does that probationary period start day one, or would it start after they've completed their certification?
It would, it would, it would go through their, their, day one, and then, we, normally our probation is six months, but it, we, we just do a six-month probation, I mean, we could do it after they, they've completed the program, I mean, we could, we can extend that, there's nothing in, in stone that says it is six months, 12 months, or whatever. I believe Columbia is 18, is 18 months.
And, it's, it's the probationary period and the 24 months are two different periods?
Right.
The probationary period lasts until they get certified, and then the 24 months sort of add.
That's correct.
Once they're on the job?
Once they're on the job, yes sir.
Yeah, there, there was some discussion, I mean, last year about people that were qualified, but had tattoos, and we was kinda lenient on that.
So, the city has a, you wanna, you wanna?
Yeah, we, we moved that from our policy to all, has ordinance simple, which is move that out of our policy.
Yeah.
If they had tattoos on their face or whatever, we still, our.
Okay. Could you go? I'm just gonna stand here for the next one.
Okay. Any more of the council discussions? Yeah, I guess I would add, basically what we're asking you to approve the ordinance is the, is the form of the contract, and then, and then you would authorize us to execute those agreements afterwards, in that, in that form. So we would bring each contract back to you, this is, this we're asking you to approve the form of the contract, and then authorize it. Does that make sense? Having heard that, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-63, an ordinance approving the training agreement for new fire department employees.
Second reading?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Bill number 2023-63, an ordinance approving the training agreement for new fire department employees.
Final passage.
Second. Full call please. Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
All of them. Our second item is dealing again with the gear extractors, which we thought we were done with, but not really, because they didn't show up a ton, so, we need a, an ordinance for a budget carryover.
So we did an amendment, budget amendment, a couple months ago for these gear extractors, they did not make the April 1st deadline of coming in, so, when they, when we changed over to April 1, that amendment basically dissolved, the money wasn't carried over, so we had to come back and do, we had to do another budget amendment to reauthorize the purchase of those gears, those gear extractors.
Any council discussion regarding the resolution and ordinance? Having heard that, call for the reading of the resolution.
Resolution 2020, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Sodalia, Missouri stating facts and reasons for the necessity to amend and increase the city's annual budget for fiscal year 2024.
Request approval? Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you council.
Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-64, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 regarding the fire grant purchase of gear extractors.
Second reading?
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Bill number 2023-64, an ordinance amending the budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 regarding the fire grant purchase of gear extractors.
Final passage?
Aye. Full call please. Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Thank you Chairman Robinson. Up next we have Community Development, Chairwoman Fox, you have four.
Thank you. Uh, thanks, we have two items for consideration. The first item is amending Article 11 of Chapter 10 regarding trash abatement, and accumulation of trash and rubbish rising to the nuisance level on some properties has been an ongoing concern and somewhat problematic to deal with, while also protecting property owner rights and granting of due process. City of Sodalia, Missouri, has drafted a code and worked with Judge Beard to address these issues in a more efficient manner that maintains judicial oversight to our actions, ensuring protection of the property owner's rights. Essentially, this addendum to the city's code provides that, for repeat offenders, a process is initiated for the judge to sign off on abatement action to dispose of the trash and rubbish with pictures taken to document. The cost of such abatement is then billed to the property owner.
Any council discussion regarding the ordinance? Having heard that, call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-65, an ordinance of the City of Sodalia, Missouri, amending Article 11 of Chapter 10 of the city code to add Section 10-462, establishing a process for abatement of trash for repeat violators.
Second reading?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Bill number 2023-65, an ordinance of the City of Sodalia, Missouri, amending Article 11 of Chapter 10 of the city code to add Section 10-462, establishing a process for abatement of trash for repeat violators.
Final passage?
Second. Full call please. Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All of them.
Our second item is Transitional Services Ordinance. After several public meetings garnering a great deal of public input and debate, and a substantial amount of research received by council culminating in a special work session on March 15, the Transitional Services Draft Ordinance is nearing its final sound for consideration. Council directed staff at the work session to bring additional information primarily regarding the buffer zones to the April 3 meeting for further review and deliberation. During that meeting, council expressed a desire to add corridors that children routinely walk to and from schools to the buffer zone, based upon concerns for their safety. While staff has been investigating ways to codify this concept, we submit that there is going to be, to take more research, and would result in adding complexity to the code. Therefore, staff ought best to provide council opportunity at this meeting to consider the ordinance that's drafted without the corridor buffers on them. And we discussed this in committee meetings today, and we kind of had some thoughts perhaps that we would like to discuss on that a little bit. I don't know if you want to talk about it a little bit more, or, we were really concerned with the corridors, and he and I talked about this today as well. Could we possibly look at the map?
I can't see them. Okay, so, there's the thousands, those spaces. And, I'm assuming that on this corner, there's.
Bottom line.
There we go. So there's the thousands of spaces, see, anything that's colored other than the circles, anything colored outside of the circles would be allowed, or allowed especially. And then, here is the profuse, uh, and things, things colored outside of the circles.
Mr. Mayor? I understand the, the complexity and, of the need for more time for staff to work on this, and, and on that corridor concept, that that's a little, little deep. However, there's still leaves, the concerns of security for vulnerable children potentially walking in some of these areas, and so, after more thought and study on this map and discussion with my constituents, I propose that we increase this buffer zone from the 1,000 feet to the 1,500 feet, with quarters later on, staff working on trying to figure all of that out, and then the staff can bring back a recommendation to change that after they've had time to work on it. But, therefore, I'd like to make the motion that we amend the proposed ordinance to change the buffer zones from 1,000 feet to 1,500 feet.
One second, one second. I have a motion in a second on the floor, do we have any council discussion regarding the motion in a second?
I just would like to reiterate that we were very concerned with the safety of children going to and from school, and that was our main focus in looking at this, that there were areas where we felt that there were a lot of kids that would be walking or riding their bikes to and from school, and we know from experience with other areas right now, and within all the research that we've done, that problems come with this, and we just wanna make sure that we are doing the best thing that we can for kids to keep them safe, and try to find a good middle ground so that everything can be able to see there. But, 15 is definitely, we thought that, and looking at this more closely, was, was a much better framework than it's happening.
Any further council discussion? Having heard that, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion varies, uh, so now we would be calling for the passage of the ordinance as amended?
Correct.
All right. Call for the reading of the ordinance.
Bill number 2023-66, an ordinance amending the zoning code, zoning code to include sections for the provision of services relating to reducing homelessness.
Second reading?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Bill number 2023-66, an ordinance amending the zoning code to include sections for the provision of services related to reducing homelessness as amended.
Final passage?
Second. Full call please. Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
August?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
No.
Seven yes, one no. Thank you council. All right, thank you Chairwoman Fox. We have new appointments, we do have liquor licenses, Cook Myers, call for the reading of the liquor licenses.
We have one new and one renewal tonight, a new license for Christina Moore doing business as Casey's number 4277 at 1101 North Limit, package liquor and Sunday sales, and a renewal for Henry Hatfield doing business as East Street Bar at 1201 East 3rd for liquor by the drink and Sunday sales. Request approval of law.
Second.
Full call, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
All right, now we will, uh, turn time down, uh, what that means is, we're clearly marking the definite point between the council of 2022 to 2023, and not reading the council of 2022 to 2024, or 2023. So do I have a, need a motion in that second, just turn? All of them?
Second.
All right, now we'll go ahead and square in the, uh, new real election opinion.
Where do you want us taking?
Uh, we leave Jason. All the same time?
Yes.
Okay, so if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, I, you name?
I.
Do you solemnly swear our firm?
We solemnly swear our firm.
We solemnly swear our firm.
That I possess all qualifications.
That I possess all qualifications.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of, uh, the, uh, of the city, of the city of Sedalia, Missouri. And the state of Sedalia, Missouri.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of all laws of this state.
The provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of the third, third class. And affecting cities of the third class and ordinance of the city.
And the ordinance of the city is basically being met open.
Basically being met open.
If I could have you all sign those, please. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks. Right here. There we go. Thank you. All right, next order of business is, uh, a question of the mayor pro temp, so we'll go ahead and open up nominations.
I nominate Chairwoman Foster.
Okay.
I'll say it.
A motion in a second for, uh, Councilman Foster.
I nominate Councilman Bliss.
Second. Second.
A motion, second, Councilman Bliss, we got a little, uh, a little action here, all right? One more to arm wrestle. Little rock, paper, scissors thing, huh? Any other, uh, nominations? All right, we'll go ahead and close nominations and call for a vote.
For Chairwoman Foster. Uh, Bogus? Yes or no?
Oh, I mean, what?
Roll call.
I'm sorry, uh, no.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Oldham?
No.
Marshall?
Yes.
Excuse me, I call for the other, vote on the other.
For, uh, Councilman Bliss. Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
No.
Cross?
No.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
No.
All right, you guys from the, from the.
Four-four, honey.
Uh, I would cast my vote the way of Councilwoman Foster. Okay, now we have the, uh, committee assignments. Okay, and next order of business? We have the, uh, this would be the fraud and total conduct policy annulment. We got both of those here. And this is, uh, he's got a, uh, red receipt there, so we can go ahead and sign and turn it in. Of course, it's. Will I give you awareness? You'll do those with you. And if you ask your brief to the, uh, Miss Williams, get those. And this is what? What do you want, two top pages?
The top pages, right?
Just the top page. Well, do you think? Two times, you mean? If we put a witness on here, uh, I would do that. Thank you. Okay. All right, we have the, uh, Miss Lady assigned from, uh, Councilor Mayor.
Yeah, I got something. Chief, Chief Works is not here tonight, but I just want to express my feelings and thoughts on the last couple of incidents, a couple of weeks ago, how our police department with their training and not being gun happy, they actually kept Sedalia out of the national news. Because if, if they'd have pulled a gun on those boys and done something bad, you'd have heard it from state to state, coast to coast. So, I, I, I want to commend them for the fine work that they did in handling those situations, and, um, I'm just pretty proud of them.
I would echo that, and then, uh, also, I, uh, wanted to say congratulations to all of the, uh, to the council. Thank you for your service. I know sometimes it becomes a painful job. Uh, but, uh, like, the people are, like you all, are willing to, uh, thank you for your, thank you.
Anything further? We'll go ahead and open up the audience. Anybody from the audience who would like to address council? Will you step to the microphone, state your name, your address, and give three minutes?
John Katie, seven oh eight West First Street. I just want to applaud the city and the state working together on, to clean up a roadway and the middle of the way of much needed underneath the Katie Trail overpass. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
That was quick, yeah, that was quick for him.
Boom. Anyone else? Getting started. So, hell, having heard that, any further, I will understand the motion in a second to close the meeting.
And then we'll be closed door session for legal advice, real estate, and negotiating contracts.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Do I have a motion, a second, to reopen the regular meeting?
No.
Second. Roll call, please.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Call for the read of the ordinance approving the purchase of property. Bill number two thousand twenty-three sixty-seven. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as three twenty-one East Main Street from Joshua Brooks Heimsaw and Haley Kay Heimsaw to the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Second reading. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three sixty-seven. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as three twenty-one East Main Street from Joshua Brooks Heimsaw and Haley Kay Heimsaw to the city of Sedalia, Missouri.
Final passage, second.
Roll call, please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
All in favor.
Call for the read of the ordinance approving the sale of the property of three seventeen, was it clay?
Bill number two thousand twenty-three sixty-eight. An ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as three seventeen East Clay from the city of Sedalia, Missouri to Edwards Property Holdings LLC and Missouri Limited Liability Corporation.
Second reading.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Bill number two thousand twenty-three sixty-eight. An ordinance approving a special warranty deed for the sale of property commonly known as three seventeen East Clay in the city of Sedalia, Missouri to Edwards Property Holdings LLC and Missouri Limited Liability Corporation.
Final passage, second.
Roll call, please.
Marshall?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Hiller?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
All in favor.
Motion, George. Second.
You didn't hear.